Running an election campaign for your father in nineteen seventy one, is that correct?
I didn't run it, I was.
You were contributing.
I was fifteen at the time, so I worked with the team.
You were making a valuable contribution.
I think so, but we lost badly.
And you have been held various roles as ministers in state government over a period of time previously.
Yes.
You're Minister for Aging.
Yes.
Disability Services.
Yes.
Multiculturalism.
Yes.
Minister for the Illawarra.
Yes.
And Minister for the closure of Cronulla Fisheries Research Centre.
Not that I'm aware of.
Does seem a bit niche, but you deny that?
No one ever told me I was the Minister for Cronulla Fisheries. But I was also the, I was also Minister for Youth and Minister for Volunteering.
Thank you. And you've also sat on various procedural committees as part of your parliamentary career?
Yes.
And I think you said to the media when you'd been appointed at various positions that politics is in your blood.
Sorry?
Politics is in your blood.
After fifty years, one would have think so.
Yes. So it's the case, isn't it, that at various points in your role as a minister that you had to interact with various unions over issues?
Yes.
In fact, you clashed with the Public Services Association in two thousand and fifteen over NDIS issues. Do you recall that?
There was many, many discussions and aspects and demonstrations by the PSA over the NDIS bill that I was bringing into Parliament.
And at the time, you described that one of the challenges that the New South Wales Government faced with the NDIS and you as a minister was that you felt sadly that the PSA Union continues to publicise inaccuracies and scaremonger as part of their self-centred campaign to retain union membership. Do you recall saying that?
I don't recall saying it, but if it's on record, then it's correct.
And it's the case, isn't it, that you have, as part of being a Minister of the Government, had interactions where you have become campaigns that they might run in order to advance the interests of their constituents?
Yes.
And that they, in your view, might publicise inaccuracies and scaremonger as part of advancing what they see as the benefit of their constituents. You agree with that?
I don't disagree with you.
Well, do you agree with me or not? The answer is yes, isn't it?
No, I don't disagree with you. I think there are qualifications to that.
You certainly had experience in your role in public life, where in your view, you've had an interaction with unions over an issue, and in your view, they have publicised inaccuracies and they've scaremongered. You agree with that?
Yes.
And that you had felt that the reason why they were doing it was as part of a campaign they were running that was self-centred, pushing their own interests.
Pushing their agenda.
So would it be fair to say that given that politics is in your blood and that you have had regular engagement with unions as part of your political life, that you're not naive about the way unions might operate? Do you agree with that?
I think that's a fair comment.
You agree that you're not naive about how they operate, correct?
As I said, I think that's a fair comment.
Thank you. And in terms of being not naive about how you operate, you understand that if they're given certain information that they might be able to deploy to advance the interests of their members, one would expect that that's exactly what they'll do. Agree with that?
But they also sometimes take earlier steps before it gets to that. And if the earlier steps don't work, yes, they'll escalate it.
And just listen to my question, that you've had experience in public life, that if a union representative is given information that they can use for the benefit of their constituents' interests, that you would expect that they would use that information. You agree with that?
I'd expect them to use it appropriately, yes.
Well, you'd expect them to use it to advance their members' interests, correct?
Using it appropriately, yes.
Well, you knew at, in two thousand and twenty-four, from your experience of working with unions, that if you gave a union organiser information that they could use to the interests of their own members, they're very likely to do that, correct?
At that time, I had a good working relationship with the union, and I knew that if we met and exchanged information, that would be used appropriately. And if to attempt to resolve any issues, and if that failed, then it would get escalated.
Well, I'll come back to that. And you knew, I think you said that Lauren Myers showed you around the council when you first became CEO.
No, sorry. What I meant is, what I thought I said was that when I went in for the interviews, the first and second interview, and I think the third interview, she was the one who met me, and then she would take me, put me into a waiting area, then she took me to where the meeting was.
Thank you. And you came to know, didn't you, once you started working at the council, that you've given evidence that Ms Myers was the EA to the mayor at a relevant time? And you gave evidence this morning that you understood that they were incredibly close.
They were a close EA and employer mayor, yes.
But you knew that they communicated regularly with one another?
Absolutely.
And we saw some text messages where even when she was your EA, it was apparent that she was still communicating with the mayor. Do you recall that?
Yes.
So you understood that she was communicating on a regular basis with the mayor, even though she was no longer his EA, correct?
Yes.
And you knew that in April of last year?
Yes.
Could the following letter please be brought up? O L G dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero two nine two? For context, this is a letter dated to May twenty twenty four from, yes, please. You see there, Mr Ajarka, we see in the top right corner, it's a letter dated to May twenty twenty four on the letterhead of the mayor. And it's to Minister Honig, the Minister for Local Government. Do you see that?
Yes.
And just to give you context, if we just flick through the few pages, you'll see that starts.
Oh, I'm.
Oh, sorry, I need to go slowly. Do you see there? The operator's going to flick through the pages. It starts at paragraph one and it goes through for sixteen matters are listed. This is where the mayor is writing.
Yes.
You've seen that letter before, correct?
Yes.
If we could go back to the first page, please. And you had a copy of that letter prior to being interviewed by Mr Harvey as part of the Weir investigation? I can tell you that you referred to it in your transcript.
Yeah, I definitely had it because I took it with me at the interview.
And you gave him a copy of it?
Correct.
And you, I can tell you, it's in the transcript, that you referred Mr Harvey to the fact that you had a copy of his letter and that you were providing him a copy with it, and that it referred to sixteen matters that the mayor had referred to the minister. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And so you reviewed that letter prior to being interviewed by Mr Harvey?
Correct.
And if we go to paragraph two, please, if we could scroll up. You see that one of the issues that the mayor was raising for investigation by the minister or someone he might appoint was the origins or source of misinformation to the USU who claimed that a hundred and fifty jobs will be cut. See that?
Yes.
So you were aware that that was a live issue prior to being interviewed?
Sorry, say that again.
Sorry, you were aware that prior to being interviewed by Mr Harvey on the twenty second of May, that one of, a key issue that was being agitated was the original source of misinformation to the USU about a hundred and fifty job cuts. You agree with that?
Yes.
And you agree with me that, and I'll take you to the Weir transcript, that Mr Harvey came to that issue repeatedly about the source of the information. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And then if we could bring up L C C dot zero zero eight dot zero zero one dot zero zero two one, and this can go on the live stream, please. So this, take your time, Mr Ajarka, this is an email from Mr Harvey of Weir to you on the eighteenth of May. Um.
Yes.
I think we might have to scroll down. I think there might be multiple emails in here. Could we go to the eighteenth of May? Yes, down, please. Um, sorry, keep going, thank you. Um, so stop. Can we just abridge those two pages? Thank you, stop. So you see there at the bottom of that page, there's an email from Mr Harvey to you on the eighteenth of May?
Yes.
And he is talking about the fact that the date for the interview, he was suggesting was in effect in a few days' time on the twenty second of May. Do you see that?
Yes.
And we know that that's in fact when you had your interview with Mr Harvey. Um, and he says in the second paragraph, in order to prepare for our interview, I will provide you further details of the mayor's complaint on Monday. Do you see that?
Yes.
And then if we scroll up, please, to the first page, um, yes, please, keep going up. And this is the email on the twentieth that Mr Harvey foreshadowed that he would give you more detail. Um, do you see that?
Yes.
And you received that email at the time?
Yes.
And you read it carefully as part of preparing for your interview with Mr Harvey?
Yes.
And part of why you're reviewing all these documents carefully, wasn't it, is because you you understood that your job was potentially on the line at this point? Because you were on leave, but your job had not yet been terminated, correct?
I was on special leave, correct.
And the part of the purpose of this investigation was to investigate your conduct, including the shut the fuck up comment?
Correct.
But broader comments, broader things that followed after that, including misinformation about the one hundred and fifty jobs, correct?
I got that out of the letter, yes.
Yes. And also, it was in the letter of the second of May that you took to Mr Harvey and gave him a copy of, correct?
Correct.
And so you reviewed all of these, these letters carefully because you understood that you were undergoing a formal interview with an external investigator, where your job was on the line, correct?
Well, I was on special leave, and I believe that this interview with Mr Harvey would get to the correct facts of the matter. That's what I wanted it to achieve.
But you understood that that was his role, was to investigate the relevant facts, and it could lead to certain fact finding that might put your job at risk, correct?
I never, even at that stage, believed my job would be terminated. I believed that they put me on special leave pending this investigation, and at the end of this investigation, I would be exonerated and I'd be going back to my job. That's what I believed.
Just listen to my question, Mr Ajarka.
Well, I'm sorry.
In terms of the purpose of this investigation, you knew that they were investigating your conduct, correct?
Correct.
And that it was very important for you to give a fulsome account of things in order for the investigator to engage in fact finding and report to the council about your conduct.
Correct.
And that included not only the sixteenth of April meeting where you swore at the mayor, but also broader conduct, like allegations against you, which included the source of misinformation about the hundred and fifty jobs. Do you agree with that?
Correct.
So if we could turn up the Weir interview with Mr Harvey, please, that is L C C zero zero eight dot zero zero one dot zero zero two two. So, Mr Ajarka, you've seen this transcript of interview before?
Yes.
And I'm happy to take you through this transcript in some detail, but I'm going to put some propositions to you. That it's apparent when, well, first of all, you've accepted that you, you prepared by looking at emails and phone messages and phone records before you went into this meeting with Mr Harvey?
Correct.
And isn't it the case that you reviewed those various emails, documents, texts and phone records in order to put together for yourself a chronology of exactly what had happened in relation to the matters Mr Harvey was investigating?
Yes.
And I can take you through the transcript, but it's apparent because you are giving Mr Harvey specific emails that are date stamped down to the minute, that you have carefully reviewed emails that were relevant to the chronology he was addressing. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And it's also apparent because we see you quoting to him, you sending and receiving SMS text messages where you're quoting them down to the exact minute, as to when it happened, that you carefully checked your text messages with key players. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And you did that before you went into this interview as part of preparing, from your perspective, the chronology of what had happened, correct?
Correct.
And that as part of checking your text messages, that you before going into this interview, you reviewed your text messages with councillor Mel Goodman?
Yes.
Because from your perspective, he was a key player in the events that happened, correct?
He was the go-between.
He was the conduit or the go-between. And if we could please go to page twenty five of the transcript. We see there in the first full paragraph, it starts on the twenty second of April.
Yes.
Sorry, the twenty second of the fourth. I think that must be the twenty fourth. Actually, I don't know what that means. That's.
Twenty second of April.
Oh, the fourth, the April, sorry. Everyone's assisting me here. So the twenty second of the fourth, that would mean the twenty second of April at nine AM. Is that is that what you think that means?
Yes.
Um, so you were talking about having a call with Ms Councillor Goodman about that. And then if we go down about four lines, you say that was the same one as the twenty first, a long conversation there. On the twenty first of April twenty four at eleven forty one AM, I sent an SMS to Mel. That's Mr Goodman, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for listening and so on.
Yes.
So do you agree with me that, you've already agreed that you checked your text messages with councillor Goodman? That you have started checking your text messages in relation to councillor Goodman from at least texts sent early on the twenty second of April. Do you agree with that?
I don't disagree. Yes, that's what it is.
And if we, to give you more context, if we can go through to page twenty eight, please. And down to the bottom of the page. And we see there the last full paragraph, at ten oh eight AM, I sent an SMS to Mel. And we can see.
Wait, um, yes, at ten oh eight, yep.
And if we look further up where the initials are J A, you're talking about the twenty fourth of April. So do you agree with me? The context is you're describing you through to more examples, Mr Ajarka, but do you agree with me that you have plainly closely analysed your text messages with key players, including councillor Goodman? Agree with that?
Yes.
And that you've done that review prior to going into the interview with Mr Harvey?
Yes, but I had my phone with me and I was reading it off my phone.
Well. So you were looking at the messages at the relevant time?
Correct.
Isn't it the case when we look at this transcript that there's a very large amount of information where you're giving Mr Harvey information about texts, emails, phone records in terms of down to the minutes, I spoke to him for twenty one minutes and so on?
Yes.
You had collated that rule in advance in order to be able to deliver that amount of information to Mr Harvey. Is that correct?
I've already said yes to that, but I'm also saying I also looked at my phone, but I did both.
You did both. But you had prepared in advance by reviewing your text messages with the key players, including councillor Goodman, correct?
Yes.
And you had collated the relevant information that you wanted to put forward as part of the chronology you wished to convey to Mr Harvey?
Correct.
Um, could we please go back to page twenty one of the Weir transcript, please? And we see, if we could scroll down, please. You see where it starts there up the top. So it has upset me a little bit that he seems to think, this is the mayor, the mayor seems to think that I'm the one who went out there. But I did discover that a USU delegate started sending emails, literally, and I'll cover that in a moment. And that's where it appears to have gotten into the media from day one. From day one by someone who I still have no idea who they are. Sandy has no idea who it is. It appears to be an employee here.
Yes.
And then we scroll down the page, Mr Harvey saying to you. I mean, I know I can't talk too inaudible either, but from my understanding, it's like a lot of these things, it's appearance. So it's a causational effect. You suddenly got, so from what I understand, it's that one fifty. Where did this one fifty come from? Suddenly, we're talking about, what I understand is, you guys are having a meeting about potential cuts. And you answered last time I cross-examined you that that's referring to the meeting with the mayor on the sixteenth about potential cuts. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And suddenly there's a meeting with, allegedly with you, with the union, and then suddenly it's out there, there's this one fifty cut. Do you see that?
Correct.
And then he articulates that or frames it as the causational link. So the causational link is in my head, or I think it's been the upsetting part. Because then that led to what happened in the meeting, the reference to the council meeting on the twenty first, twenty fourth. Do you agree?
Yes.
And etcetera. So do you agree with me, you've already agreed that in the second of May letter, which you reviewed carefully prior to going into this meeting, and then you gave a copy of it to Mr Harvey, that you knew that a key source of Mr Manoon's grievance and issue, and Mr Harvey describes as one of the things that's upsetting the mayor, is the origin or the source of the information about the one fifty number, correct?
Yes.
And now Mr Harvey is directly turning to that topic in the interview. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And you knew he was going to discuss that because you'd been told that in the letters that he sent to you before the interview, correct?
Yes.
So you turned your mind to that issue, haven't you?
Yes.
Because you knew it was going to be addressed.
Yes.
And so he is squarely putting to you at this part of.
Sorry.
So he is squarely putting to you in this part of the interview that he is trying to work out the causational link, and he is putting to you a chain, a theoretical chain, where he's saying firstly, there's a meeting in effect on the sixteenth about potential cuts, that's the swearing meeting. Next, he's saying allegedly you had a meeting with the union. And then he's saying third, suddenly there's out, it's out there, there's a one fifty cut. Have a look at the transcript. That is, that's the clear chain. He is saying this is the allegation about causation. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
So he put that causational link to you squarely. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And you concealed in your answer to him the fact that it was true that you had in fact met with the union. Do you agree with that?
I met with the union, yes.
Look, I'm putting a different.
I misunderstand. Yeah.
Look, look at the next part of the transcript. I'll just go back a step. That Mr Harvey is putting to you a clear chain with three links in it. The first link is, there's a meeting, in fact, you agree, on the sixteenth about potential cuts, the swearing meeting. Then there's allegedly a meeting, this is link number two, allegedly a meeting between you and the union, and link number three, suddenly it's out there, there's one fifty. So he is putting those links to you, and he's saying there's an allegation you met with the union. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And could you please read your response at the bottom of page twenty one and following, and then tell me when you are comfortable that you've read the material you gave in response?
Yes.
So could we just scroll down so we can see the, sorry, scroll ups, right? So we see there, stop, thank you. What I want to suggest to you is that Mr Harvey has clearly articulated for you that he is questioning you about whether you allegedly met with the union, and he's putting in the context of is this the causational link? Which is where the one fifty information has come from. And you have concealed from him the fact that it's true, the allegation that you met with the union was true. Do you agree with that?
That I had concealed it?
You did not tell him, I met with the union. Do you agree with that?
No, I don't agree with that.
Well, just have a look at it. If we, what Mr Harvey said to you, that it's alleged, it has been alleged that you had a meeting with the union. Do you see that?
But in.
Just wait.
Okay.
He has alleged that you met with the union. Do you see that there?
Yeah, correct.
That is link number two in the chain.
Correct.
And in response, do you agree with me that you do not tell him the truth? Yes, the allegation is true. I did meet with the union. Do you agree with that?
I didn't say I didn't meet with the union. I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Just listen to my question. You agree with me, nowhere do we see there, you positively saying to Mr Harvey, the allegation that I met with the union is true. Do you agree with that?
I don't deny that I met with the union. He's telling me that I met with the union. I didn't disagree with that.
Well, have a look at this, Mr Ajarka. In your response, what you do is instead of telling him the truth, that yes, the allegation is true, I met with the union, you seek to divert him and mislead him by saying, at no time did I ring the USU, they rang me. So you sought to give him a misleading picture that you were in effect a passive actor, which is that you had not taken the active step, but rather that the union had rung you. Do you agree with that?
No.
And that you sought to mislead the investigator in that respect.
No.
So just stop there. Just look at the bottom of page twenty one. At no time did I ring the USU. So just stop there, just look at the bottom of page twenty one, at no time did I ring the USU.
That's correct.
Do you agree with me to tell them what had happened?
Correct.
Um, do you agree with me that that is false? Because you now agree that you rang Sandy More than on the Friday, the nineteenth of April? To arrange a meeting with her?
I'm sorry, you're in effect cutting out steps. I made it, I did not in any way deny that I met with the union. He made that as a statement, I didn't disagree with it. He then indicated the causational link. When I talk about at no time did I ring the USU to tell them what happened, they rang me. And then, and I said to him, how do you know about this? And they mentioned to me the USU delegate emails, that's the first time I became aware of the USU. Emails, that's what I was talking about.
Just listen.
I'm sorry, it it it's like.
No, just just listen to my question, can we?
Listening to your question, I do agree with you.
Can we scroll up a bit, please? The causational link that Mister Harvey has given you is that there's a meeting about potential cuts? That's on the sixteenth of April, which is in effect cuts to to directors and some managers. And then there's allegedly a a a meeting with you and the union and suddenly it's out there. I want to suggest to you that the factual picture that you painted to Mister Harvey? Was misleading because you did not reveal to him that in fact? You had rung the USU on the nineteenth to set up a meeting with Sandy More than for the specific purpose? Of discussing with her what had happened in the sixteenth of April meeting, do you agree with that?
No.
And that you um actively sought to mislead Mister Harvey? Because he had effectively hit the nail on the head in terms of causation? Because. You did in fact have a meeting with the union and then suddenly there was a one fifty uh number? And so you were concealing the fact from Mister uh Harvey that you had in fact had that meeting, do you agree with that?
No.
Sorry, um. So if we just go back to the causational link. There's three links, there's a meeting about potential cuts on the sixteenth. Then the second link is that there's allegedly in a meeting between you and the union and the third link is suddenly it's out there, there's one fifty. So if we just deal with the third link? That after your meeting with the union on the Monday, suddenly it's out there, there's one fifty, you've agreed? In evidence last week and to my learned friend, that on and from the Monday? That you knew that there were rumours um being disseminated that a hundred and fifty job losses would occur, correct?
Yes.
So he was right about the third part of the link?
Yes.
And the second part of the link he posited to you was that you had had, there was an allegation you'd met with the union, correct?
Yes.
And he was right about that, wasn't he?
Yes, because he knew it.
Well. I'm happy to give you time to read this tran- transcript, at no point in this transcript do you state to Mister Harvey? You are correct that I did in fact meet with the union and you are correct? That that afternoon, the one fifty um number was out there, your theory about causation in terms of the links is correct.
At no time does it say that I did not meet with them, it's the reverse as well.
Did you agree with me that nowhere in this transcript did you tell Mister Harvey, yes, it's true, I met with the union?
Do you agree with me, it doesn't say I didn't meet with, that I said I didn't meet with the union? Lord your respect, you can word it any way you want to, there is nowhere it says there that I did not meet with the union. I was agreeing with him as he was putting a proposition to me.
Mister Ajaka, you're being interviewed by an independent investigator? And you've agreed with me that one of the allegations that you know in advance he'll be testing? Is uh what is the source of misinformation about the one fifty and are you the source, you agree, you've already agreed with that, correct?
Correct.
And he puts it to you squarely, there's an allegation that you met with the union, correct?
He says it very clearly.
Puts it specifically in the context is that the causational link is, is an allegation you met with him and then suddenly one fifty is out there. If you were seeking um to be frank and honest with this investigator, you would have said, yes. I met with uh Sandy More than on the Monday. I did have a meeting with her.
I disagree with.
And I want to suggest to you is the reason why you uh failed to tell that to Mister Harvey on the day? Was that it was a deliberate withholding on your part? You accept that?
No.
And it was a deliberate holding on your path? Because you knew that your job was on the line because that's what they are investigating? And that if you told the truth, which is you had actually met with her? That it would become rapidly apparent that you were the source of the rumour, you agree with that?
No.
And if we go over the page? You say at no time did I ring the USU to tell what happened, they rang me. I want to suggest to you that is false because the evidence you've now given on oath to the commissioner? Is that you were the person that rang Sandy More than and you asked her to come in for a meeting with you? And you explained what had happened in the sixteen April meeting to her, do you agree that you misled Mister Harvey about that?
No, that paragraph in its entirety relates to my indicating about. My job being on the line and my saying I knew nothing about this and when I asked where did this come from? I was first told about the USU delegate email, the first one which I didn't have a copy of? And that was then sent to me, that's what that paragraph is referring to.
Want to suggest to you Mister Ajaka that this part of the transcript is not talking about whether your job's on the line, it's about the one hundred and fifty cut? And it's put squarely to you and the evidence you give to Mister Harvey? Is that that came from the union and the way it came is that they rang you? And they put it to you and that evidence is false? Given what you've told the commissioner in this hearing, do you agree with that?
No.
And that. If you, we could scroll down, please? That. Where you say I never mentioned the one fifty? And as I said, I never spoke to anyone.
Sorry, say that again?
Do you see there, the second full paragraph starts, so I never mentioned the one fifty, as I said, I never spoke to anyone. You see that?
No, which paragraph?
The second full paragraph, whi- which starts.
Yes.
So I never mentioned the one fifty, as I said, I never spoke to anyone. See that?
I can't see.
Next paragraph down, I think, Mister Ajaka, so I have never mentioned.
Oh, yes, sorry, that's the third.
As I said, I never spoke to anyone.
Yeah, about the one fifty, yes.
Um.
I'm referring that I've never spoken to anyone about the one fifty.
But what I want to suggest to you, that you are giving an extended answer about your role in engaging with the unions and whether or not you're the source of information? And you are uh deliberately misleading the investigator here? Because you are failing to reveal to him that you actually rang the union organizer on the Friday? Um, to arrange a meeting with her and that you called her in for a meeting in your office on the twenty second to discuss? The topic of the sixteenth of April meeting and potential job cuts, do you agree with that?
No.
And that up. When, but given that Mister Harvey had identified three links in causational chain, the second one of which is that you met? With the union, that by failing to reveal to him that you had in fact met the union and instead saying? What happened was they rang me, that you were deliberately seeking to mislead him about your involvement with the union, you agree with that?
No.
And. You were seeking to downplay your involvement to suggest that the union had in effect rung you out of the blue and put it to you? That's what you were seeking to paint a picture of.
No.
When in fact you had been an active protagonist in the matter because you had called Ms. More than? And called her in for a meeting where you described at length um all of these various matters with her, do you agree with me?
No.
And. Then if we focus on page twenty two? If we see up the top, the evidence you give there.
Sorry.
Sorry, at the top of page, what's on your screen? And this is where you're giving evidence that what happened was that they contacted you? And you said, how do you even know about this? That's when they said to me the email and I went, what email? Now, that email you're talking about is the one fifty nine PM email from the USU advocate, correct?
Yes.
So that's an email in the afternoon?
Yes.
So. What I suggest to you is that you are seeking to mislead Mister Harvey here by suggesting? That that was the first time you had an engagement with the union was in the afternoon of the Monday? And that you were concealing the fact that you'd actually met with Sandy More than in the morning and discussed um? Matters relevant to job losses, do you agree with that?
No.
And that you were seeking to uh mislead or di- divert the minister by reference to concrete evidence being an email? To conceal the fact that you'd met with her in the morning?
No.
And. Would the tran- are we able to bring up the transcript?
Which day?
Um, twenty nine July. I don't know, does this have I and Q numbers?
Uh, internally, we have.
Oh, sorry.
Doc IDs for this very eventuality. Which page?
Um, page eight two seven. So just, can we just put that scroll up for a second? Mister Jaq, in relation to the we are interview, you agree with me that as? Part of your preparation leading up to that interview that you carefully reviewed your phone records and your text messages and emails, correct?
Yes.
And that um in particular, you um carefully checked your text messages between you and councillor Goodman?
Yes.
And I took you to the date range um? For which you must have checked your Goodman texts and it included at the very least from the twenty first of April through to after the twenty fourth, do you agree with that?
Yes.
And. Uh, yes, thank you. And do you recall? That on the second day when I cross-examined you and I showed you some text messages between you and councillor Goodman? Um, on the twenty second, at the moment you looked at those texts, it was obvious to you that you had met with Sandy More than on the twenty second, do you agree with that?
Yes, certainly, sir.
It was obvious from the 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 tenor of those texts, you looked at them and it was immediately apparent that you had definitely met? With Sandy More than on the morning of the twenty second, correct?
I believe that's correct, I just can't recall it now.
So isn't it the case that before you went into the meeting with Mister Harvey? In on the twenty second of May last year, firstly, you agree with me that was about four weeks after the relevant events?
Yes.
So the events would have been fresh, fresher in your mind back then?
Yes.
And the fact that you had in fact met with Sandy More than on the morning of? The twenty second of April was something you would have remembered at the time?
Yes.
It's not something you would have forgotten, correct?
Correct.
And also that you would have remembered at the time? Noting that you also checked your phone records in your preparation for this interview? But it was you that called Sandy More than to ask her to come in for a meeting with you, agree with that? Bring her in and talk to her about jobs and restructuring and so on, correct?
Yes.
And. So I want to suggest to you that you did have um in your memory at the time you were interviewed by Mister Harvey? The fact that you were the person that instigated the contact with the union by um having contact made with Sandy More than, you agree with that?
Yes.
And also you knew um at the time that? You had in fact uh met with her on the Monday morning and that you remembered that at the time?
Yes.
And you also knew there was an allegation that you had met with her and was that in effect a causational link in terms of misinformation? You knew that was an allegation made against you.
From the email that I got from Mister Harvey? And from the discussion, and from the interview, yes.
So you you knew one of the things he was trying to get to the bottom of was, did you in fact meet with the union prior?
On, I I knew what he had listed in his email as what he wanted to discuss with me.
But you also knew from the questions he was giving to you on the day that one of the things he was trying to get to the bottom of? Was did you meet with the union and was that meeting um just prior to the one fifty number coming out, agree with that?
I I don't recall it that way, what he was trying to get to the bottom of is who uh mentioned the one fifty, that I knew.
Well, Mister Jaq, we can go back to it, but I've just gone through the three link causational chain that you. And the middle link was, there's an allegation you had a meeting with the union and then? Link number three is then the one fifty number comes out, you understood he was trying to get to the bottom of the fact? Did you in fact meet the union, correct?
No, I I don't accept that, he he was stating that we had a meeting, he wasn't trying to ascertain if we had a meeting. He made it, he made it clear that he was having, that we had a meeting? And he was trying to link that meeting to the, to what was being said and that's, and I said, no. So I'm sorry, I don't really see what you're getting at.
Well, I'll be clear, Mister Jaq, you're under oath.
Yes, I accept that, thank you.
Said to you, there's an allegation, I'm trying to work out the causational link and there's an allegation that you met with the union. And at no point in response to him did you say, yes, I met with the union, you agree with that?
At no point did I say I didn't meet with, he made a statement, you met with the union, I was probably nodding at the time. I'm sorry, the, I did not, if I had intended to tell him I did it, I would have said to him, no, I never met with the union. I did not do that.
Mister Jaq, what you did was he put the allegation that you met with the union and instead of telling him the truth and saying, yes, I did? You said, at no point did I contact the union, that was a lie because you had and you said, I was reacting to them. Well, you said at no time did I ring the union, that was a lie, wasn't it, because you did ring Sandy More than, correct?
I, but again, the first, these, these are two or three different, so the first phone call when I meant, yes. But when we were talking about the USU advocate, about me losing my job, I did not make that phone call. That phone call came from Sandy and that was what happened, so the two. So they're two completely separate occasions that seem to have somehow rather turned into one.
And?
And that's why the rest of it talks about the USU Advocate, the, and who it went to and who the people were in it. It's that, that I'm talking about, not the meeting I had with Sandy.
Well, nowhere do we see in the transcript with Mr Harvey that you told him that there was any type of meeting with Sandy.
Sorry?
At no point did you tell Mr Harvey that you had a meeting with Sandy Morethan, correct?
Please, you, you can ask me the question fifty times in different ways with all due respect. And I will tell you again, I did not say to him, I did not meet with her. He made a statement. I was probably nodding at the time, just as I nod to you when you make statements.
Well, I want to suggest to you, you would not have been nodding to him because the information you gave him was to downplay your role and suggest that you had been a passive participant and that the union was the one that contacted you. Do you agree with that?
Again, for the fiftieth time, no.
And could we please turn up transcript eight two seven, please? So the context of this cross-examination, Mr Jacka, is at this point, we didn't know the information that Sandy Morethan, evidence that she met with you on the Monday. You had not revealed it in any documents by this point. And we also didn't have the text messages from Mr Goodman revealing you'd had a meeting. So I'm cross-examining you on a different basis because we did not yet have that information.
Understand.
So if we look at eight two eight.
Sorry, which one?
Uh, sorry. If we go to the next page, please. So I am cross-examining you on the basis of what you've told Mr Harvey because that was the state of knowledge at the time from my perspective in terms of instructions. Do you see there at line five? I'm asking you about the interview with Weir. That what happened was the union rang you and they told you their understanding was that there would be a hundred and fifty job losses and that was on the twenty second of April, which was the Monday. Do you recall that? I can't recall the date. I recall receiving a phone call from Sandy Morethan and I indicated to her that that's completely incorrect. There's no talk of one hundred and fifty job losses.
Correct.
And then down the bottom at line forty, I say to you, what she, was it she that rang you to say, we understand there's going to be a hundred and fifty job losses at the council? Was she the union person? Yes. So there you're giving a different version of events, that it was Ms Morethan that rang you and put the one hundred and fifty number to you and you told her that that was incorrect.
Sorry, where are we reading now?
Line forty.
Forty, right.
You're giving a version of events that Ms Morethan was the one that rang you to say, we understand there's going to be a hundred and fifty job losses. Um, she said that to you and then up at about line nine that she'd rung you and you told her.
Now, look, can I, I misunderstand you with that?
You see at about line thirty eight, I say, was it she that rang you to say, we understand there's going to be a hundred and fifty job losses at the council? Was she the union person? Yes.
Yep, I see that.
See that?
Yep.
And if we scroll back up, please, to line ten, you also give a version of the same conversation, that there was a phone call from Sandy, where she um had put the hundred and fifty job number to you and you had told her it was completely incorrect and there's no talk of that. Do you see that?
Yes, I see that.
I want to suggest to you that that is another version that you have given the commissioner that is inconsistent with your evidence this morning, which was that Sandy Morethan was, rang you on the Monday.
No, that's, that's what happened.
Well, I want to suggest to you that that's inconsistent with the evidence that you have given today. And that, again, you were seeking to mislead this commissioner in giving that answer because at this point, we did not know that you had in fact met with Ms Morethan. And we, I was testing you on things that you had told Mr Harvey. And you were repeating the misleading information to suggest that you were a passive participant in the process and that it was the union that rang you. Do you agree with that?
No.
And at no point did you reveal in this questioning, well, actually, I met with her on the twenty second. Do you agree with that?
No.
And you seek to give misleading evidence to suggest that what happened was in fact there was a phone call?
No.
And that you were the recipient of the phone call, so you were seeking to downplay your role in events?
No.
And in fact, for more than an hour this morning, you gave a detailed recall to my learned friend about a very detailed meeting you had with Ms Morethan on the twenty second.
Correct.
That you uh, I want to suggest, gave misleading evidence to this inquiry by failing to reveal that you had met with Sandy Morethan where issues about job losses had been discussed at length that morning.
Not correct.
And I want to suggest to you that the first point at which you stopped giving that misleading version of events and gave a truthful version for the first time, which is that you had met with Sandy Morethan, was when the following day I put text messages to you from councillor Goodman that made it obvious that you had met with her. Do you agree with that?
No.
And so I want to suggest to you that you are prepared to give false evidence to this inquiry where you think you'll be able to get away with it because there isn't it. You're hoping there's a document that doesn't impeach you about it.
No.
And that when I put the text messages to you that made a playing you had met with her, that was the first point at which you told the truth about meeting with the union?
No.
You didn't tell the truth to Mr Weir about the fact that you'd met with the union? Because I want to suggest he didn't have a document that he could impeach you with to force you to tell the truth about that.
No.
Now, Mr Jacka, after you were interviewed by Mr Harvey on the twenty second of May, twenty twenty five? And then about seven days later, you received the termination letter that had been attached to a council minute and you, your employment was terminated?
I can't remember the date, but I received the letter, yes.
But I could tell you it's dated twenty nine May, that's a matter of public record.
Thank you.
Could we please pull that up? I N Q dot zero zero three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. Yes, please. Um, could we just scroll down, please? So you recall reading this at the time?
Yes.
And there were various instances of alleged unsatisfactory conduct put against you in that letter? Do you see the bullet points?
Yes.
So we see on, the, the, the last bullet point there is on twenty second April, you met with representatives of the USU immediately following the meeting?
Yes.
The USU commenced making accusations to the effect, and then we see over.
Yes.
Um, that the hundred and fifty number.
Yes. Sorry, where's the hundred and fifty?
It's in the quote at the top of that page. They started making accusations to the.
Oh, yes, sorry, I missed that, yep.
And then the next bullet point. So that bullet point is in effect the causational link that you met with the union and then immediately thereafter, they started alleging one hundred and fifty job losses. And then the next bullet point is that it's apparent from the timing of the accusations that the USU's concerns about security of employment arose from the meeting with you, that's the meeting you had with the union and from your lack of action to correct the misstatement and so on.
Yes.
So you understood that one of the key bases upon which council was terminating your employment was um, an allegation on their part that you had met with the union and immediately thereafter, the union started making accusations about a hundred and fifty job losses, correct?
Yes.
And also, um, looking at that bullet point on the second page, the timing of the accusations of the union um, meant that their concerns arose from the meeting that you had had with the union. See that?
Yes.
So a key um, basis that, of your termination is those allegations that you meeting with the union, correct? And that immediately thereafter, the one fifty rumor starts. Do you agree with that?
That's what they're alleging.
And you then commenced judicial review proceeding, seeking to challenge the termination of your employment, correct?
Yes.
And so one of the issues in those proceedings, um, so as part of those proceedings, you, you were seeking to defend yourself uh, against the allegations uh, made against you in relation to contact you'd had with the meeting and the one fifty rumor.
I believe about the one fifty, yes.
Because that was one of the bases upon which you've been terminated, correct?
Well, that's what was believed, yes.
Um, do you agree with me that as part of bringing litigation in the court to defend against an accusation that you had met with the union um, just prior to the one fifty rumor coming out was to be um, honest about the fact that you had met with the union?
No, I don't agree with that.
You don't, you don't agree with that?
No.
Would you agree with me that was a central issue that would need to be dealt with um, as part of your litigation, as whether you had in fact met with the union?
No, the issue was the hundred and fifty, I hadn't said it.
Just have a look at your termination letter, Mr Jacka. Look at the bullet point on the bottom of page one. On twenty two April, you met with representatives of the USU. And immediately following that, in effect, the one fifty accusations start. Do you agree with me that a key piece?
Looking at the top, on the twenty second of April, you met with representative of the USU?
Yes.
Immediately following the meeting, you commenced making accusations to the effect that the mayor is looking at sacking one fifty staff members, yes?
So that was one of the central planks upon which your employment was terminated, correct?
That I, was being put to me, the accusation that I was the cause of the mayor resacking a hundred and fifty staff members. Nothing about me meeting with the union.
Well, no, I object. To be fair, um, it is the allegation that follows that. It's from the timing of the accusations that the US concerns about security of employment arose from the meeting and your lack of action to both correct the misstatements and reassure staff. Well, let's have a look at it. The bullet point on the second page there, that the USU's concerns about security of employment arose from the meeting with you. Would you agree with me that a central issue is firstly, whether you met with the union and what you talked to them about, correct?
No, I don't believe for one moment the issue was whether I met with the union. The issue was, did I say, which I didn't, that the mayor is looking at a hundred and fifty staff? There was never any question about, I met with the union all the time, everyone knew that. So I'm sorry, you, you're trying to combine the two into one, that's just not correct.
Well, so as part of working with lawyers to prepare this summons in court about your termination, you carefully reviewed the chronology of events, is that correct?
My lawyers prepared the summons, that's correct.
Well, they had extensive input from you, didn't they? Because you were the one that understood the chronology.
Look, it, it's been a while, I'd like to see the summons.
All right, I think my learned friend would like a short break.
Yes.
Five minutes.
Take five minutes and, and, uh, until ten.
Um, Mr Jacka, before the break, I was discussing with you the judicial review proceedings you brought in the Land and Environment Court. Seeking to challenge, among other things, the decision of the council on the twenty ninth of May to terminate your employment. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Um, could we pull that up, please? L C C dot zero zero two dot zero zero four dot zero three nine one. That can go on the live stream. If you will go to the second page, please. Um, do you see there, it's a summons, you, you saw this at the time it was filed?
Yes.
Um, you see there, um, in the middle it says material date, twenty nine July twenty twenty four and or twenty nine May twenty twenty four. I can tell you that the twenty nine May date is the decision of the governing body of the council to terminate your employment.
Right.
And um, see there, filed in relation to the whole decision. So you're saying to the court, I'm challenging both of those decisions. And if we go to the second page, page please, we see the next page, paragraph three, you're seeking a declaration that the purported termination of your employment is void and so on. See that?
Yes.
So one of the things you were challenging in these proceedings, that we see down the bottom, if we could scroll down again, details of decision three, you're seeking relief from purported decision to terminate your employment. See that?
By which number?
Um, num, there's, there's multiple number threes, I'm afraid. The number three that's.
Oh, yeah, the bottom one, yes, yep.
See that?
Yes, yep.
That was part of what you were doing in these proceedings, correct?
Correct.
And then if we go forward, please, to um, page twenty seven. I think it's actually underscore page twenty nine of the physical document, which has paragraph one two eight, do you see that down the?
Yes.
Do you see there, it's um, referring to the correspondence you've received articulating the basis for terminating your employment?
Yes.
And then one two nine, you're quoting the text of the letter that was put to you as the, if we go over the page, please. We see up the top, since that time, council has considered several instances of unsatisfactory conduct on your part specifically. And then we have a series of bullet points. Do you see that?
Yes.
And you understood those bullet points to be various instances of unsatisfactory conduct that council was alleging against you that justified the termination of your employment?
Yes.
So the, um, the second instance of unsatisfactory conduct in the second bullet point was the swearing meeting, you see that?
Yes.
The third um, um, instance of unsatisfactory conduct. um instance of unsatisfactory conduct in the third bullet point is on the twenty second of April, you met with representatives of the USU?
Yes.
And immediately following the meeting, the USU commenced making acts accusations to the effect that the mayor's looking at sacking one hundred and fifty staff members, do you see that? Now, it's the case, isn't it, just breaking down the third bullet point, it is true that you met with the representatives of the USU on the twenty second?
Yes.
I want to say to you, there's nowhere in this pleading where you admit that you met with them on that date?
You can't be serious.
Well, I'll make this good in the submission, nowhere in this um pleading do you accept that you met with uh representatives of the USU on the twenty second, do you accept that?
No, in the pleadings, they say that I didn't meet with them on the twenty second, it's simply repeating what was in the letter, and it's stating that I met with them and immediately following that meeting, the accusation of the one fifty was being made, that was one of the causes that I was disputing about the one fifty.
Just wait, the second part of the third bullet, so the first part is that you met with the USU, you, on the twenty second, you agree that's true?
I met with them on the twenty second, yes.
And then the other part of it is that immediately following the meeting, the USU started making accusations about the one fifty, see that?
Yes.
Now, you agreed with me um on thirtieth of July, that that second part is true, that on the Monday, the union was disseminating um information about one hundred and fifty job losses um on the Monday, which is after the meeting you'd had on the Monday, do you agree with that?
That's our recollection, yes.
So I want to suggest to you that that allegation of unsatisfactory conduct in relation to you uh was correct.
Why object?
No, sorry.
Object, I'm sure it may be that this is articulated and described as an allegation of unsatisfactory conduct in the letter that's the subject of the pleading, noting that paragraph one hundred and twenty nine begins on the previous page, says the correspondence stated in part, and then as Mr Ajaka's already alluded to, proceeds to quote from the letter. Quite how one can discern from the third bullet point taken in its entirety, that there's any allegation um of misconduct in, first, someone meeting with the union, and secondly, then what happens thereafter is difficult to fathom, and then when one goes to paragraph one hundred and thirty, in fairness to Mr Ajaka, the allegation of unsatisfactory conduct is effectively being denied. Though in my submission, it doesn't advance my friend's cause in attacking Mr Ajaka's credit with respect and and mindful of what fell from the commissioner this morning about the utility of continued exploration of the source of the hundred and fifty job losses. Um, in effect, the the question has no relevance to the terms of reference, and the question also is based on a premise which my submission has not made good.
I'll ask a different question.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mr Ajaka, if you look at the fourth bullet point there, do you agree with me?
Yeah, the fourth bullet point's on the page.
Thank you. Uh, the fourth bullet point starts, it is apparent from the timing. You read that there, that that accusation also involved um a me- an allegation about a meeting you had with the USU, you agree with that?
I I agree with that, it says that, again, copied from the letter.
And if we can please go to uh page um fourteen of the pleading, which is page fifteen of the physical document. You see at paragraph sixty nine, the applicant did not inform any person about what happened in the meeting, this is the sixteen April meeting, until you met with Mr Harvey, you see that?
Yes.
You agree with me that that information is incorrect, you've given the information, you've given evidence on oath this morning that you told Sandy Morethan of the union that um you detailed information about the sixteenth of April meeting, including the exact um job losses that the mayor had proposed and the fact that you told him to shut the fuck up, you agree with that?
No, I agree with that, yes.
But you agree with me that paragraph sixty nine is wrong? You agree with that?
No, uh, uh, sorry, the paragraph is correct. When the only person I told about what happened in that meeting was, of course, the people that were in the meeting who knew about it and the EA. When Sandy came to see me, she had already heard by the time she came to see me about what had happened and the swearing, and so what I was referring to there in that paragraph is that the mayor had on day one gone out and told the whole world, um, and they were contacting me, I did not instigate the initial contact.
You agree with me that you were form- informed Ms Morethan about what happened in the sixteenth April meeting when you met with her on the twenty second, you agree?
That's correct, but she had already been made aware of the issue that happened between the mayor and I.
And do you agree with me in this part of the pleading, you're going through, giving a detailed chronology of factual matters that are relevant to uh the termination of your employment, see that?
Shall I say that again?
Do you agree with me in this part of the pleading, you're going through and giving a detailed account of chronological matters that are relevant to the termination of your employment, see that?
Yes.
And that we see, um, for example, paragraph seventy three, if we can scroll down, you give information about um interactions with councillor Goodman and so on?
Yes, but before that, I mean, again, you 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 just take something out of context, before that, we can go back to seventy or sixty nine paragraph, I mean, the applicant did not inform any person about what happened in the meeting, I'm talking about immediately after the meeting, however, in the following days, the applicant did receive a number of phone calls and text messages from other persons who were aware of what happened at the meeting, that's because the mayor basically told the whole world, he didn't leave anybody that he hadn't told, and that's what I was referring to, I wasn't the source of going out and telling people, the mayor had already spoken to the media, the mayor was already telegraphing it to everybody, that's what I'm referring to.
So, Mr Ajaka, please, can you look at paragraph seventy four? So then you are saying, not a long after the discussion with councillor Goodman on the twenty second, you received a telephone call from the organizer of the union?
Yes.
She indicated that she knew um about the meeting, that would be the the swearing meeting.
Again, that was in relation to the email from the USU about the fact that the council, the mayor was going to terminate me, and I'd had asked her, how did she know about that?
I want to suggest to you that by um including in this pleading, um, a phone call from Sandy Morton, she called you about the sixteenth meeting and failing to disclose the fact that you had in fact um met with the union organizer was misleading.
This phone call came after that meeting with Sandy on the twenty second, I'd had a num- she phoned me later that afternoon in relation to the mayor wants to get rid of me, and when I asked her, how do you know this, she mentioned the email from the USU advocate, and I asked her to send it to me, that's how that occurred.
Mr Ajaka.
And it talks about the email.
Mr Ajaka, you'd given evidence on oath for about an hour this morning, that you had a meeting with Sandy more than that morning?
Correct.
And that you told her during that meeting at about nine AM in the morning, that uh you'd had the sixteenth of April meeting with the mayor, and that you'd had an altercation with him, and that you he, you had told him to shut the fuck up, and you've not regret about it, so you gave evidence on oath this morning, the point at which she was told about that was when you told her in the meeting the morning, so the evidence that you have just given, that she called you in the afternoon, and that that was the first time she raised with you in the afternoon, that was false evidence, you accept that?
No, no, sorry, all right, I hope I shouldn't.
I don't.
Witness hasn't given evidence of the kind, the way that my friend said, that I I think the way I heard the question, what was said to be false evidence, is in fact the paragraph in the pleading, paragraph in the pleading, not it.
No, I asked a different question, which is, this witness has just given evidence on oath that Ms Morethan rang him in the afternoon and revealed to him that she had heard about the shut the fuck up meeting?
No.
That's what the-
No.
Ajaka, just wait.
Sorry.
Perhaps we should just put the proposition again, so we're all clear about what is being put.
Well, the transcript will reveal the evidence that the witness gave, so, Mr Ajaka, in the pleading at seventy four, you suggest that um Ms Morethan rang you in the afternoon on the Monday and indicated that she had knowledge of the meeting, and then you just repeated um evidence to similar effect to the commissioner, which is that she rang you in the afternoon and she revealed that she had heard about the shut the fuck up meeting, my question to you is that evidence that you just gave is false, you gave extensive evidence to my learned friend this morning that, in fact, you had arranged the meeting with Ms Morethan, you'd met with her at nine AM in the morning, and you were the one that told her that you had told the mayor to shut the fuck up, so the evidence that you just gave was false, do you accept that?
No.
And I want to suggest to you that, given one of the basis, it's the eighth of April, um, because you you told her you needed to have a meeting with her on the following Monday.
Yes.
And you've accepted to my learned friend, it was logical that you organized this meeting?
Yes.
So this was an ad hoc meeting, it wasn't a regular meeting you were having with her?
I thi- I think most meetings with Sandy, Morethan were ad hoc meetings, we didn't have a set meeting, the we would meet regular.
But this is a specific meeting that you organized with her for the purpose of the things you discussed with her on the Monday, correct?
Yes.
And um the meeting was at a, in the morning at about nine AM?
Yes.
You had text messages, your EA organizing coffee orders and so on?
Yes.
And I think Ms Morethan said you organized donuts for her, is that correct?
Can't remember donuts, but I I it could be, I can't.
Have a ring of truth about it?
I don't, I don't remember donuts, but it could have been, it's usually chocolates, but it could have been donuts.
And you've given extensive evidence um to my learned friend this morning of um what you say is a detailed recall, what you say was discussed at the meeting, and that includes detailed um information about what happened at the swearing meeting on the sixteenth of April, you agree with that?
Yes.
And you to raise any of that material with a union leader at that point, when it had not, none of that had gone to council, I agree with that?
Object, i- it's following on from um com- Commissioner, your comments um before lunchtime. Um, the reason Mr Ajaka was called back was that um there was the subsequent evidence of Sandy um Morethan, and um an application was made from my learned friend that in the circumstances, it was a matter of fairness for um Mr Ajaka to be recalled and cross-examined or examined further on that part, now, I do put my hand up and um admit there was an area of new evidence that I did ask him about towards the end of my questioning, but I would submit that was um a very small scope, um, but he has now been in the witness box on what should have been a narrow issue for practically a day, um, Commissioner, you've given an indication about um the relevance and the scope of this, my learned friend set out to you um her um anticipated forensic use of this evidence, um, in my submission, we've come to the end, and also now a question raising breach of confidence, which hasn't been put, hasn't been raised before, is really enlarging what was supposed to be a matter of um fairness to Ms Morethan, to Mr Ajaka and bringing him back today.
And I indicate, I'm only going to ask a couple of questions about this topic, I'm not opening up a new front, it will become rapidly apparent, if I could have the indulgence just for a couple of questions on this topic.
I I have a question, but in general, having regard to with the other room, so I'll remain cryptic, um, I think the platform has been well truly laid, if I can express it in that way.
Thank you, um, what I want to suggest to you, um, Mr Ajaka, that it's it's apparent that we, sorry, you accepted from my learned of the sixteenth of April, that the proposal in relation to terminating two directors and managers was not going ahead because you had indicated you would not agree with it, you remember that evidence?
Yes, that I would not go ahead with it without a council resolution.
And that you agree with me, there had not been a council resolution?
I agree with you, there had not.
So I want to suggest to you that there was uh no legitimate basis for having a meeting with the San- with Sandy Morethan about an issue when you knew that there uh was no council resolution about it yet?
I I don't agree.
And that the reason why you arranged a meeting with with Miss Morgan was to, in effect, activate the unions, because you understood that your job with the council was seriously at risk, and you were calling her in to um give her information that would be of great interest to her and her constituents, you agree with that?
No.
And that, given that you are not naive about politics and about how unions act in the best interests that they see of their members, it was obvious to you that if you gave her uh information during this meeting about the fact that you uh had had a blow up with the mayor and told her to shut the fuck up, and that there were job losses on the line and so on, that it was obvious to you that that would be immediately weaponized, you agree with that? And it would be weaponized as part of your dispute with Mr Manon?
No.
And the evidence that you gave this morning, that maybe you're naive and that wasn't obvious to you, that they would deploy the information they gave you is false?
Are you saying I'm naive?
That the explanation you gave to the commissioner on oath, maybe I'm naive, I didn't think the union might use information that I gave them about job losses to protect their members, to suggest that that didn't occur to you at the time because maybe you're naive, that that is a false explanation that you've given?
No.
That it's laughable that someone with your political experience would not understand that if you gave information um to a union organizer where you'd called her in for that meeting about job losses, and the fact that you had had a blow up with the mayor, that they would not immediately deploy that information to their benefit, that was obvious, wasn't it?
No.
And that was the entire reason why you called her in to have the meeting was to give her information that would be adverse to the mayor and and knowing that they would then weaponize that information against him, correct?
No.
And that's all the, also the reason why you concealed the fact that you had the meeting with the um union um from Mr Harvey of Ria, accept that?
No, I don't accept that.
And you concealed that in the pleading you put forward in the Land and Environment Court that you'd met with them?
I don't accept that.
And what happened when you had the meeting that you called Ms Morethan in for was that you told her about the fact that you'd had a blow up with the mayor and you told him to shut the fuck up at the meeting on the sixteenth, correct?
I I believe she'd already heard about the swear aspect of it.
Well, Mr Ajaka, this-
It'd been circulating everywhere from literally the minute it happened, so she she would have been well aware of it.
Well, your evidence this morning is that you told her about that?
No, I I thought my evidence this morning was that I said that I shouldn't have said that, that I brought her in to explain why, as I said, it was like the elephant in the room, I explained why I said it, not that I told, not to tell her for the first time I said it.
And that you um told her that um Mayor Manon had given you a directive to cut one hundred and fifty jobs?
No.
And that you had told her you would refuse to do that?
Uh oh.
And that it was after you had told him, that he had told you you had to get rid of one hundred and fifty uh jobs, and you said you wouldn't, and then that after that you told him to shut the fuck up?
Right.
And that uh you had painted a picture to Ms Morethan, that you were standing up to the mayor, that he was giving a directive that a hundred and fifty jobs be cut? that you were standing up to the mayor, that he was giving a directive that a hundred and fifty jobs be cut. You were standing up to him and that you were putting your own job on the line, standing up to the mayor, correct?
No.
That is the clear picture you painted to her in that meeting?
No.
You accept that?
No.
What I want to suggest is that you were not only telling, deliberately spreading false information to her about a hundred and fifty job losses, you were painting yourself as the hero of the picture that you were putting your own job on the line to stop that happening, correct?
No.
And that you understood that you were painting a very colorful and volatile picture that you knew the unions would immediately weaponize.
No.
And that they would come out to defend you?
No.
Correct? And they did in fact come out to defend you, you understand that Mr Donnelly went on the Ray Hadley Show the following day?
I understand that.
And you understand that emails went out that afternoon describing how fantastic you were at council and adverse to the mayor, you recall that?
That's the USU advocate email?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't see the first one, I saw the subsequent ones.
And that the unions actually wrote a letter prior to the meeting on the Wednesday, saying that they supported you.
I can't recall knowing about the letter before or after the event.
So it's the case, isn't it, that on the morning of the twenty second, you understood your job was at risk? Because you knew that the mayor had referred to you, people had told you he'd referred to you taking leave, you knew that before you met with Sandy Morethan, correct?
At no time before that council meeting did the mayor or any of the other councillors indicating that would there be a motion to in any way terminate me or deal with me. And when we went to that first meeting, the exact opposite occurred.
You knew that your job was potentially at risk at that time because relations had broken down between you and the mayor, correct?
I did not believe at that time the mayor would be insane enough to move to terminate my job.
I want to suggest that you knew your relationship with the mayor was strained and that your job was at risk by reason of your conduct and you were giving misinformation to Ms Morethan, knowing that she would inevitably utilize that information by publicly disseminating it, you agree with that?
My relationship with the mayor had been strained for several months, but at no time had any indication ever been given to me that the mayor intended to terminate my employment. If he was, he was definitely keeping it a secret from me.
And you understood, you've given evidence that you understood that the unions were in fact disseminating what you knew to be false information on the Monday afternoon about a hundred and fifty job losses?
Yes.
And in fact, you knew that afternoon because your EA had sent you a text message, was that the mayor was specifically saying that you had activated the unions because they were now disseminating a rumor about a hundred and fifty job losses? You recall that text?
Yes.
That Lauren sent you?
Yes.
So you knew it was being
I don't know if the text mentioned the hundred and fifty.
The text said, the mayor says that you have activated the unions.
Yes.
So on the Monday afternoon, you knew that in fact the union was spreading the one hundred and fifty job loss misinformation already?
Yes.
And you knew that the mayor was saying that you had activated the unions, that you were the source, correct?
But I don't think he mentioned the one fifty in the text, if I'm wrong.
He had said you'd activated the union, correct?
Thank you, but you said that he said the one fifty.
And I want to suggest that you had activated the unions that morning in the meeting you'd had with Ms Morethan?
No.
And that the reason why you did not at any point issue a public email to staff, some other type of public disavowals of the rumor is that you were deliberately seeking to escalate this conflict?
You asked me that last time and I answered it last time.
And I want to suggest the reason why you did not issue any type of public statement or email that the rumor was false was because you were the person who had in fact started the rumor.
Again, you asked me that last time and I answered you last time, no.
And you knew on the Tuesday that after the Ray Hadley interview where Mr Dodley had repeated the false one fifty rumor, that that was an obvious point at which you could have issued a public email?
I object.
All right, I'll ask a different question.
Sorry, it's more fundamental than that, I think as Mr Ajarka has commented in the last couple of his answers, a lot of this has been put on the last occasion.
I was going to say.
Well.
The witness.
I'll move on, it is different because the last time I cross-examined Mr Ajarka, we had not yet received the evidence from Ms Morethan that she'd met with him and we did not yet have the texts from Mr Goodman revealing that Mr Ajarka had met with her and Mr Ajarka had not revealed an evidence that he'd met with her. So the cross-examination proceeded on a different basis. But I'm happy to move on.
And you are right to point that out, although my observation from a moment ago, I think, remains prevalent.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Mr, I assume nothing from you, I shouldn't assume, nothing from Miss Hamilton-Jool, nothing from you, Mr Boyle? Anything from you?
One very brief matter, if we could bring up on the screen, please, L C C dot zero zero eight dot zero zero one dot zero zero two two. This is the transcript of the Weir interview, Mr Ajarka, which you had taken to. And if we could
Let us catch up.
Sorry.
Can you just give me that, that'll come up on the screen, it's all right.
If you could go to internal page twenty two. And just to the foot of the page. So, Mr Ajarka, do you see there at the foot of the page, the initials SM, that's Sandy Morethan, that's right, isn't it?
Yes.
And she refers there to, we started talking about the one fifty jobs on the Monday.
Yes.
To your recollection, was that talking with you when she says we? Do you have a recollection of talking to her on Monday about the hundred and fifty jobs?
No.
Nothing further?
No, I wasn't going to say anything.
Could I just take you to page twenty one? Down in the bottom. You've been taken to this by my learned friend. It's the three factual matters that Mr Harvey's putting to you.
The causational, yes.
So there's the the potential, oh, sorry, the potential cuts meeting. I just want to ask you about what's written up there. There's there's a meeting with allegedly inaudible with you, with the union. I'm just wondering, the allegedly blank with you, do you recall what was said there, what word was missing?
I'm trying to.
For example, was a name nominated of allegedly person blurt with you, with the union?
No, I can't think of who that would be, I didn't even put my mind to it. No, I can't.
You can't recall? No further question.
Thank you, Mr Ajarka, for your attendance and assistance over a long day. I much appreciate it. The same position will remain, I won't be formally excusing you, but as soon as that can happen, that will be communicated to you and you're free to go for this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything further to do this afternoon?
I could tender for documents or I could do that Monday morning.
Why don't we? And, all right, thank you, everybody, I'll adjourn till ten AM?
Yes, thank you.
Ten AM Monday.
Thank you.